I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation. Administrator, when you are prepared, please proceed.
Please join us in an attitude of prayer. God in heaven, thank you for this opportunity to come together and work together. We ask for information, inspiration, and insight, direction and guidance, and peace and harmony. May we accomplish great things this day, and may we display an attitude of cooperation and respect. Amen.
Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Is there a motion for the approval of the agenda for this afternoon?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion's been made for the approval of the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing none, there's no comment from the public. You are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to our meeting schedule. Administrator?
The next meeting of the commission will be a business session Wednesday, October 26th at 6:00 PM here in the chambers.
Thank you. There are no honorary resolutions, nor are there any discussion items, no public hearings, and there is nothing under our consent agenda. That brings us to our regular session. The first item is 2022-344. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-344 is consideration of the appointment of Zachary Thompson as the Clay County Prosecuting Attorney effective October 24th of 2022 to fill the unexpired term of Daniel White. The staff would recommend to the commission that this resolution be passed this evening. Mr. Thompson is in the audience this evening, and we would like to note that on the face of the agenda, there was a typographical error when it said the effective date was the 29th, but the effective date is the 24th.
Thank you for that clarification. So, are there any questions of the Administrator?
No questions, thanks.
Commissioners, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote.
Very good, thank you. With that, is there a motion? I'll give her a moment. Is there a motion related to 2022-344?
I move that we approve 2022-344.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2022-344. Discussion, is there anyone who would like to speak on this subject? Certainly, the applicant is more than welcome to, or not applicant so much, but to the appointees is certainly welcome to speak.
I'd just like to say, we are humbled by the trust this commission is placing in me and the men and women of the Clay County Prosecutor's Office for the work that we do for our community. We won't let you down, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment this evening? Very well, I would just like to make the comment that it is certainly great to see Mr. Thompson go from prosecutor-elect to elect. Certainly, the electoral process has played out, and this is one of the last actions that we're doing as we go forward for the balance of this year to make our transition from a statutory county to a constitutional county. Certainly look forward to Mr. Thompson's tenure as our prosecuting attorney, and obviously our congratulations to his predecessor, Dan White, who is now a member of the judiciary. With that, Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. I just want to, you know, say to Dan White that we're, you know, very grateful to his years of service to our county, and that very excited and have all the confidence in the world in Zach Thompson to take over that really important role here for Clay County. So, my honor to make this motion today.
Very good. I'm sorry, did you say you'd made the motion?
I renewed the motion, yes.
Okay. So, a motion's been made by Commissioner Carpenter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolte?
Yes. With that, we will stand down for a moment, and we will take a moment to maybe get a picture or two with our soon-to-be prosecuting attorney, and we will then reconvene momentarily, just a couple of minutes. With that, we will return to the agenda. That brings us to three items, and our companion items. Those would be 2022-350, 351, and 352. Administrator?
Yes, resolutions 2022-350, 351, and 352 are companion resolutions regarding the rezoning, preliminary, and final plat for the Forest Rocky Creek subdivision. Planner Spees is here to provide information to the commission.
Please proceed.
Shane Spees, Clay County Planner. This is a proposed subdivision of Forest Rocky Creek. This property is currently 59 acres, unplanted and zone agricultural. The proposal is to subdivide nine acres off of the 59 acres in total, and that would make it to where there's only going to be one additional lot added to this property. This lot is going to be rezoned to residential ranches since it's between the five and 10 acres. There is a blue line stream and flood plain on the property, which the applicant has included their agricultural land preservation within that. This proposed subdivision falls under the rural density tier of the 2008 comprehensive plan. The com plan typically allows for one dwelling unit per 20 acres or a subdivision of five-plus acres, as long as there is a percentage of the land that is preserved in agricultural land preservation. And like I said before, for that lot we are creating, there is agricultural land preservation As you can see on the slide up here, this is going to be the surrounding areas. You can see the rate counting line barely here to the east. The city limits of Lawson are just north of the subject property up around here. And a previous subdivision that was heard by the commission back in January called Massengill Acres is just southeast of the proposed subdivision. This is our standard rezoning criteria. Each review and decision-making body should consider this, and it was also attached to the transmittal. This is what our process looks like. We publish this case in the Courier Tribune. We send all joint and property owners within 1,000 feet certified letters. In this case, we sent 10 survey letters. We post a rezoning sign on the site, and then we start our public meeting process. The applicant has received all of the outside agency approval, and the point of that is to be sure that we are creating buildable lots for one single-family residence. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we had no opposition leading up or during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Planning and Zoning Commission voted 402 approve with the one condition, and that condition is in regards to changes to recording copies of the final plat. I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission might have, and the applicant is present.
Are there any questions, staff?
No questions, thank you.
No questions.
Is the applicant here, and would they like to make any kind of statement?
I'm here. I have a statement.
Does anyone have any questions of the applicant?
No.
Is there anyone else wishing to comment on this issue? Okay. I guess I'll go back to staff. There was no opposition expressed on this?
That is correct.
So, would the commission like to go consent on this, since there seems to be no controversy?
I support consent.
Yes, please.
Okay. So, the items 2022-350, 351, and 352 will be on consent. Just to let the applicant know, are you familiar with our process as far as what's going to go with the next step? It will be on consent, which means that it will be, it's considered non-controversial, so it will go bundled with other items next week, so we won't be hearing it separately unless something happens and there's a request to have it taken off consent. But failing that, it will be on next week's consent agenda with any other items that are not controversial and don't involve spending money. So, obviously, you're always welcome to come and attend these meetings, but I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up on how it was playing out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to 2022 Ordinance 34. Administrator?
2022 Ordinance 34 is consideration of amendments to the 2011 Land Development Code. Planning and Zoning Manager Jones is here to provide information to the commission.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. So, this is a proposed amendment to the 2011 Land Development Code specifically regarding cell towers. So, we previously had two pretty controversial cases. Staff heard back from both Planning and Zoning Commission members, the public, and staff wants to try to align our code with the state statutes. So, there were several reasons why we decided to revisit this section of code. So, the first thing we did, we looked at surrounding jurisdictions and what their code is regarding cell towers. So, we looked at Platt, Jackson, and Clinton County, as well as Smithville, Liberty, and Carney, really specifically looking at setback requirements, because that was a lot of the discussion during those two previous cases. You can see on the screen here, we looked at it two different ways. So, we, this first column, the setback column, gives you how far in that jurisdiction the cell tower has to be from the property lines. There's two outliers there. Clinton County is 11 times the height of the tower, which is a massive setback, and Jackson County is only half the height of the tower. So, those are the two outliers. The other ones are anywhere from 100% of the height to times and a half in that range. Currently, the county code is 100% of the height of the tower from the property lines. That second column shows you what that setback would be for 161-foot tower in that jurisdiction, and then the minimum lot size if that cell tower was smack dab in the middle and met that setback requirement. And then we also did it for a 260-foot tower, because that's the size of a tower for the large, larger cell towers. And then we also did the minimum lot size. So, again, this was included, or actually, this wasn't included in the transmittal, but this is just kind of to display what other jurisdictions are doing, and the takeaway from here is the consensus seems to be anywhere from 100% of the height to times and a half the height for the setback requirements. So, we heard this amendment at three Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, and public input was taken during all three of those meetings. Those ideas from the Planning and Zoning Commissioners and the citizens ranged from having a minimum acreage to be allowed for a cell tower, to increasing the distance to the property lines, requiring an impact study. As part of those two previous cases, we heard about noise in cell towers. Now, in my experience with cell towers, when we do inspections, there's no noise. We also talked about the setbacks, future extensions of towers, and there was some discussion about limiting cell towers to specific zoning classifications. So, there was a lot of discussion, a lot of ideas thrown out, and what the Planning and Zoning Commission ended up doing was adopting some of those, but not all of those ideas from the citizens. So, what I have on the screen now are kind of the major changes that the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending. The first one is, we've always required landscaping around the base of a cell tower, but the new code would define that more. It would tell the applicant that they have to do six-foot-tall evergreen trees in two different lines. Right now, it's just kind of a gray area where staff approves that landscaping. The next one's one of the big ones. They chose to increase the setback from the property lines to one and a half times the height of the tower. So, again, we're at 100% of the height of the tower now. This would increase it to one and a half times. This would also add that the tower would have to be 100% of the height to any residential structures, and this would apply to residential structures on the property where the cell tower is. And another big one is, they decided to add a setback requirement to any residential structure. So, this would include neighboring houses, and that would be three times the height of the tower. So, that increases that setback quite a bit. There was also discussion about not limiting new development. So, if there's an existing cell tower and a developer comes in to subdivide that land and create a subdivision, we didn't want to hold them to that three times the height or the times and a half height, so we reduced that to 110% of the height of the property. The thinking there was, if you're purchasing one of those lots, you know the cell tower is already there. And then another big change would be to require an impact, excuse me, an impact study, which would be site-specific. It would require things such as property value study, renderings of the site before and after the cell tower, and it would be reviewed by a third party appointed by the county, and the applicant would be responsible for paying those fees. So, I've got a couple examples here. So, this one on the screen now is the case from 140th Street, from one of the two previous cases. The blue dot is where the tower was proposed, and the 240-foot lines show the setback if this amendment is adopted, where that setback would fall. Obviously, it falls outside the subject parcel. So, if these rules were adopted, that previous case the commission heard would not be allowed a cell tower unless they were granted a variance, because they wouldn't meet the setback requirement. The 480 feet shows what the setback would be to any residential structure. So, you can see there is a residential structure right there, so it doesn't meet that requirement as well. So, there's a couple reasons for this subject parcel why it wouldn't be allowed 160-foot tower if this amendment is adopted. The second one is, I just picked a random 20-acre lot. It's outlined in red. Again, the tower location is right there. It would have a 390-foot setback, which is one and a half times the height. It would work for this lot, but it also has a 780-foot setback here and here to any residential structure. So, that's the three times the height. And in this case, there's a house right here. Again, this parcel wouldn't work for a 260-foot tower, but it would for a little smaller tower. So, and I can't emphasize enough, each property's a little bit different. The Planning and Zoning Commission had discussion about wanting to beef up the regulations, but not too much where cell towers wouldn't be allowed on any property. As I stated, this case was heard at three meetings. We received public input during those three meetings, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 4 to 0 to approve the version that you have in front of you. The transmittal that was submitted includes the current code, and then also has the additions and deletions highlighted in red and green, so you can see those as well, because I kind of just hit the highlights. And I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Thank you. I think you answered one of my questions, and that was the issue of grandfathering existing towers.
Yeah, so this would only apply for any new tower going forward.
I assumed as much, but I thought I'd better ask just to make sure. Sounds like there was some pretty lively discussion based on this, and it sounds as though we're coming up to a pretty reasonable meeting of the minds on this, because as you'd mentioned, if it got too strict, we don't want to outlaw towers. We need to have this kind of communication open for citizens of the county. This feels like a reasonable accommodation to what we need to have.
I would agree.
Commissioner Thompson, did you have any questions or comments?
I have no questions at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Just a few, thanks. The 100% of the height of the tower to other residential structures on the parcel itself, do we have any regulation in place currently addressing that?
We do not.
And what's the thinking there in terms of, you know, the owner of the parcel itself having that requirement?
The thinking there is, if there would be a problem with that tower and it fell, I would not want it falling on a structure that was habitated by humans.
Yeah. Okay.
But I get the idea that it's the subject property, and they're choosing to have the tower on their property, so the commission could choose to change that?
And is that, I mean, you mentioned you looked at, you know, neighboring jurisdictions, counties, and municipalities. Is that a requirement that you found that they had?
My recollection is it is in some of them, but not all of them.
Okay. And then, other changes that aren't included as the major changes, is there some changes to the co-location requirement?
Yeah, so we, I briefly mentioned that we tried to align our code with the state statute, so there was, the state statute says we can't judge it based on other suitable sites, so we removed that, the co-location. Bonding requirement was removed.
And that, all of, so all of those changes with the bonding requirement for abandoned towers and all that stuff, that's all state statute is, essentially requires us to remove that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present wishing to comment on 2022 Ordinance 34? Seeing none, since we are talking about an ordinance change, there seems to be some controversy attached to it. Regular session?
I would support regular.
Yes, please.
Very well. 2022 Ordinance 34 will appear on our regular agenda for our next meeting. That brings us to 2022-346. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-346 is consideration of a law enforcement asset transfer cooperative agreement between Clay County, Missouri, and Boone County, Missouri. Captain Agderian from the Sheriff's Office is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Captain Amy Agderian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. This is an agreement drawn up by Boone County to transfer a, we call it the BAT van. It's basically like a big bus, or a small bus, big van, and it is typically used to be like a mobile breath alcohol testing, if you will, BAT van, on scene for roadside impairment testing. This is a 1999 van that they are wanting to transfer to us, and we don't intend to use it for, like, DWI purposes. We already have a BAT van, but what this is going to allow us to do is have a mobile resource for our hostage negotiations team that is a function of our star team, our special tactics and response team. This will allow us to have a climate-controlled area for equipment and personnel when on scene at hostage situations.
Okay. And so, this is coming to us from Boone County?
Yes. So, earlier this year and last year, we donated a lot of vehicles to other people, and this time, we're accepting a donation with your approval.
All right. Any questions?
No questions.
No questions, thanks.
Anyone else wishing to comment? I think we don't look a gift horse in the mouth. Does consent sound good to everybody?
Works for me.
All right, 2022-346 will appear on consent at our next meeting. That brings us to 2022-340. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-340 is consideration of a transfer within a fund. This request comes to us from Juvenile Administration. The funds are in the amount of $14,000 to pay for attorney's fees representing juvenile delinquencies, abuse, and neglect cases, and Janet Rogers is here to answer any questions the commission has.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Janet Rogers, juvenile officer. I've also got her honorable Alicia O'Hara, Division III Judge. This is just a cooperative between Division III and the juvenile office. They have insufficient funds to make it through the year to appoint attorneys for parents in abuse and neglect cases and for juveniles in delinquency cases. I had some extra money in my legal fees line item budget and would like to transfer that money to Division III for them to be able to hire attorneys to represent the indigent population.
Very good. Questions or comments?
No questions.
No, no questions, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? Very well, since it's a transfer between funds, I think consent is acceptable?
If it's okay with you. I would support consent, yes.
That's good.
Very well. 2022-340 will appear on consent at our next meeting. And thank you, Your Honor, for being here today.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to 2022-342. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-342 is consideration of approving the Form 4379 with the Missouri Department of Revenue, allowing county staff access to sales tax data with the Department of Revenue, and the county auditor is here to answer any questions.
Please proceed.
Yes, Victor Holbert, Clay County Auditor. So, Resolution 2022-342 is something we do on an annual basis. It's just a housekeeping item. We are notified by Department of Revenue to update this before the end of the year. You'll notice there is an attachment for commissioners to sign this as well, just in the event that there had to be a need for commissioners to access business sales data. So, I will, once the new commission is seated, I'll bring this back to update that at the start of the year. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
No questions.
Consent agenda, I think, would work on this if everybody's agreeable?
Works for me.
All right. 2022-342 will be on consent for our next meeting. That brings us to 2022 Ordinance 32. Administrator?
2022 Ordinance 32 is consideration of approving the annual fee schedule with long-term planning for the fees from 2023 to 2027, and our county auditor here is to provide information along with staff.
Please proceed.
Yes, Victor Holbert, Clay County Auditor. 2022 Ordinance 32 is also an annual thing we do. It's the five-year fee schedule, so this is for 2023 to 2027. The budget team wanted to present this before we presented the proposed budget to you. It was factored into our revenue planning for 2023 and onward. There are 12 fee schedules. Generally, the approach is to only change the last column or 2027. There were some exceptions there that I'll just point out to you very briefly. So, there are 12 items. The Midwest National Air Center, you see, you know, some slight increases next year that were already planned, and, but there's no change to 2027. The Assessor had no changes at all. The Clerk's Office, I did want to call your attention to the second page of that. There is an increase effective next year in firework permits, $75 to $250, as well as $5 for notarizing documents, the Clerk's Office notarizing documents, not issuing a notary license. The, for the golf course, I'm sorry, excuse me, facilities, there's no change for the golf course. Did want to mention, no changes to 2027, but I did want to mention that they did, they are stopping or discontinuing their Paradise Club pass. For the Highway Department, you'll see some slight increases that were planned next year, and there are slight increases that were requested in 2027. There were no changes to into our revenue planning, uh, for 2023 and onward. Um, there are 12 fee schedules. Generally, the approach is to only change the last column or 2027. Um, there were some exceptions there that I'll just point out to you very briefly. Uh, so there are 12 items. Uh, the Midwest National Air Center, uh, you see, you know, some slight increases next year that were already planned and, but there's no change to 2027. Uh, the Assessor had no changes at all. Uh, the Clerk's Office, I did want to call your attention to the second page of that. Uh, there is an increase effective next year in firework permits, $75 to $250, as well as $5 for notarizing documents, the Clerk's Office notarizing documents, not issuing a notary license. The, for the golf course, I'm sorry, excuse me, facilities, there's no change for the golf course. Uh, did want to mention, uh, no changes to 2027, uh, but I did want to mention that they did, uh, they are stopping or discontinuing their Paradise Club pass. For the Highway Department, you'll see some slight increases that were planned next year, and, uh, there are slight increases that were requested in 2027. There were no changes to, um, historic sites or marketing. For P and Z, uh, I'll just call your attention to the land disturbance permit. Uh, there were increases based on acreage, uh, effective next year. There were some increases to the mailing costs, just to account for that increased cost, and there was a removal of the electronic plan submittal, and I would imagine that would be due to, uh, having electronic software that we're implementing. Uh, for parks, wanted to spend a little bit of time here. Um, they did add a discount for military members. There was a reduction, I'm sorry, there was a, an addition of cancellation fee for camping of $10. Uh, the Crows Creek Pavilion had a decrease from $15 to $12 to rent that, uh, that pavilion. Um, other things I'll mention there, they added a dock infill section. Uh, there was also a, they added for, uh, replacing damaged equipment, they added a couple things for miscellaneous equipment and paddles. Then there were no changes to the recorder of deeds. To Sheriff's Office, finally, the 12th one, there is an increase that was approved earlier this year for the inmate housing for municipalities. So that is all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions about those specifically, or staff, as, as the Administrator mentioned, can go into a little more detail.
Thank you. Um, on some of these, uh, it's, um, it's nice to see the county holding the line, especially in the face of inflationary times on some of these fees. Certainly, we want to make sure that the people that are here as our guests, our, our different facilities and using our services are able to, to do so. Um, yeah, most of them seem fairly reasonable, fairly minimal, those that did go up. So, um, questions or comments?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay, anyone else wishing to comment? Seeing none, since there are some fee increases, I, I think I'd be more comfortable with 2022 Ordinance 32 being on regular for our next meeting.
I agree, yeah.
Very good. That brings us to 2022-341. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-341 is consideration of a contract with SGI for design-build services for a maintenance building in the Parks Department in the amount of $219,795, and Director Driscoll is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Mike Driscoll, Clay County Parks Director. Uh, this resolution would ask the award of bid 5222 to SGI for the build, design and build for a new maintenance building at Camp Ranch, just, uh, right at the entrance there at the campground. We've been working out of the same old small facility from the beginning, and this, uh, award, which was determined to be the lowest and best bid to meet specifications for the project, would get us started on a new maintenance building and, uh, proper equipment, uh, space to work on things during, during the winter and, and just any time of the year.
Okay. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any comments or questions?
I have no questions, thank you.
No questions, thanks.
Okay, and this, does this replace, or does, does this replace another, another building I take in? I think that's what you mentioned. This replaces another structure?
Yes.
Yeah, I seem to remember we had one that was not in the best of condition. Okay. I'm glad to see somebody wrote their name there because my handwriting is so atrocious, you can't read my signatures. I'm glad someone else is, also feels it's necessary to write their name so that you can read who signed the document, so thank you for that. Very well, so, uh, is there anyone else wishing to comment on this? Seeing none. 2022-341 on regular?
That's fine.
Yep, thanks.
Very good. 2022-341 will be on regular for our next meeting. That brings us to 2022-334. Administrator? 335, I think, yes, I'm sorry.
That's right. Resolution 2022-335 is a consideration of utilizing ARPA funding for laptop deployment program with Convergen One. Director Shaw is here to provide any information that the commission needs.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kevin Shaw, IT Director. This is a resolution to approve ARPA funding for laptop deployment for all the employees who have desktops currently as their desk, as their, uh, work computer. We're going to swap them out to laptop PCs and impart that, make that part of our rotation going forward. That would help us in any COVID situation or any other similar situation in the future.
It seems like a pretty reasonable precaution. You never know what's going to come at us, of course, and that gives them a little more flexibility. Any questions or comments?
No questions.
No questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, regular agenda for 2022-335?
That's fine.
Very good. Number 2022-348. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-348 is consideration of the utilization of ARPA funding and a capital project encumbrance request from the, for the Parks roadway repair project with Superior Bowen Asphalt Company, and John Davis is here to provide information to the commission.
Please proceed.
Uh, John Davis, Deputy Director, Parks. This resolution is for, uh, ARPA funding request for asphalt road repairs in the parks. Um, we'll have a little over eight miles in the Crows Creek area and 3.7 miles in the Camp Ranch area. This includes roadways and parking lots. This will be a two and a half inch overlay with, and be done by Superior Asphalt, Superior Bowen Asphalt, excuse me.
My understanding that some of these, um, these roads and parking lots are in pretty rough condition.
Yes, sir. It's years of use and weather have taken their toll on them.
Uh, do you have, uh, and I realize each one is going to have a slightly different history to it. Do you have an idea ballpark of how long it's been since some of these have been, uh, have been maintained or been touched? I realize it's going to vary a good deal.
I've been here 12 years, and I think the Crows Creek area had some patching and seal coving. The parking lots, to my knowledge, haven't been done in a long time. I, I don't remember that, so.
Sounds to me like we've gotten pretty reasonable usage out of the materials that were down there.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
No questions, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Um, and I, I'm sure I went right by it, but certainly this is a qualified expense under the ARPA.
Um, yes, it does under the economy recovery. Um, just to share a little bit more information with the commission. Um, we presented to the commission last year during the budget process, and $3 million was allocated for the road project. However, we've been very successful and the bids came in below that, so not only were we able to do the roads that we had planned in both areas, but we're also able to repair the parking lots and still be below budget of three, the total is $2.2 million. And so, um, we are able to do more and come in under budget.
Thank you very much for, for staffing, for everyone involved. It's, uh, you know, I, I realize staff works very hard, but this is a, this is a pretty substantial, uh, result of, of the hard work of everyone involved to not only come in under budget, but to, uh, overperform as far as being able to do more work for less money. So certainly, uh, we appreciate the, uh, the hard work to make those economies a reality and to, uh, basically have the ability to use that money in other areas where it's needed. Questions or comments?
No questions.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? Uh, in that case, 2022-348 will go on regular agenda? That brings us to 2022-347.
Resolution 2022-347 is the consideration of utilizing ARPA funding and also a capital project encumbrance request for the Trails Asphalt Repairs Project toward the contract to McConnell and Associates, and John Davis is here to provide information to the commission.
Please proceed.
John Davis, Deputy Director, Parks. Uh, this resolution is an ARPA funding request for trail repairs at Smithville Lake. It's been completed by McConnell and Associates. Um, this has, this will complete, we did phase, what we call Phase One earlier in the year with several trails, and this will complete the rest of the trails at Smithville Lake. Uh, we're looking at about two and a half miles of the Little Platte North Trail, five and a half miles of the Little Platte South Trail. That consists of patching, crack sealing and seal coating. Um, there'll also be a addition to the trail at the entrance of Little Platte Park. The City of Smithville has stopped their sidewalks at our entrance. We're going to put in about a little over 1,100 feet of asphalt trail to connect with them. Big safety issue gets people off the roadway when they're walking in, and they can easily walk on, get on the trails in the park. There's also another spur that we're calling about 160-feet trail addition with the Harborview subdivision. They've, added to their sidewalks and stopped at our property line, and we'll just connect with them. And then there's a little bit of work that we'll finish up on the Smoke and Davy Trail.
Question or comment from this, from the commission?
No questions, thank you.
No questions, thanks.
Okay. Any comments from, uh, anyone else here? Seeing none. Uh, 2022-347 for regular agenda?
Agreed.
Very good. That brings us to 2022-345.
Resolution 2022-345 is the consideration of ARPA funding and a capital project encumbrance for a stormwater infrastructure project at Rush Creek and Raines Road, awarding the contract to Decker Construction. Deputy County Administrator Walters is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Carl Walters, Deputy County Administrator for Clay County. This is approval for a project for the branch of Rush Creek. Uh, requesting approval, uh, for stormwater infrastructure funding, uh, for repairs, eroded stream banks, and to replace the unstable, uh, stormwater structure on the branch of Rush Creek. The cost of it's $242,212 under, uh, Decker Construction.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the commission?
No questions.
No, thank you.
Okay. Uh, anyone from the, uh, public wishing to comment? Seeing none. 2022-345 would be on regular agenda?
Agreed.
Very good. That brings us to 2022-343. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-343 is consideration of approving a cooperative agreement between Clay County and the City of Smithville, Missouri for winter storm water, storm road maintenance, and Deputy County Administrator Walters is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Commission. Deputy County Administrator Carl Walters. This is a cooperative agreement for the winter storm on road maintenance, and what takes place is, uh, with each city that we deal with on cooperative in winter is to, uh, plow roads that are closer to us in our territories so that we don't have to go too far out of our way to do, you know, a couple of miles or maybe half a mile or whatever. So, we work with the other cities so that they can do within their area, so if they're right by, they're close, they can plow it instead, and then we can stay over in our area. We'll plow some of their roads. You'll see a list on the very back page of what, what we take care of, or will take care of, and they'll take care of. And then we work with these cities to do that, so in this cooperative agreement right now, it's just a winter storm, but we usually turn around and have a maintenance agreement, and we're working on that as well, on maintenance that we do throughout the year. So we take care of roads as they take care of roads because it's closer to them, closer to us. So if that makes a little bit of sense, because it saves us on time and money.
I was going to say, it does certainly sound like a more efficient use of the work hours that we have available, and when it's, um, you know, when the weather gets very, very bad, every hour counts that we can have somebody out there working the roads.
Correct.
Questions or comments from the commission?
No questions, thank you.
No questions.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to comment on 2022-343? Seeing none. Um, I think that could go on consent. Are they okay with that?
I would support that.
Very good. Uh, that brings us to 2022-349. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-349 is consideration of the official destination marketing organization designation, so for participation in the Division of Tourism's Promote Missouri Fund Program. And I will present on this one. Um, so as the commission is aware and, and passed, uh, the county has received a designation, uh, from the State of Missouri Tourism, and allows us then to participate and get grant funding for our marketing opportunities. Um, due to staffing changes over the years, um, the county unfortunately did not reapply and then lost our designation. So this resolution before you is the first step, um, that we need in pursuing and reapplying for designation, um, and so we would recommend that the commission approve the resolution.
Questions or comments?
Uh, just comment, which is that I, you know, I think this is a worthwhile thing to pursue, and obviously, um, a number of advantages that come from getting this designation, including potential grant dollars, and I think it makes sense to, uh, take the step, so.
Commissioner Thompson?
Uh, no questions, but I am also glad to see that this is on here moving forward, and that we're going to regain our status and start working on this a little bit. Thanks.
Appreciate the work you've done on this, and, uh, yeah, it's something that, especially given we've got some things that are going to be coming up with, um, that will hopefully re, uh, respond, redound to our, uh, our, uh, benefit as a county as they come up, different events and different, uh, uh, different other, uh, things coming up that would, you know, we need to be ready for those, and this is a good way for us to get there. Sorry, I turned a little, got a little lost in my words there. Um, consent?
Agreed.
Very well. 2022-349 will be on consent for our next meeting. That brings us to our final item, which is 2022 Ordinance 33. Administrator?
2022 Ordinance 33 is consideration of establishing Title II and rescinding and deleting current chapters 30 and 31 of Title III of the Clay County Code of Ordinances and replacing it with Ordinance 2022-33. Um, I'll provide a, a brief overview for the commission. Uh, we have a, just a very brief PowerPoint to hit the highlights of the recommended changes in the Code of Ordinances. Um, the first item is creating and establishing Title II, uh, which currently there is nothing in Title II, and we are recommending that we add to and in, and include in Title II, create, um, the Clay County Constitution that was recently passed by the voters. In Title III, there are several chapters, Chapter 30 and Chapter 31. In Chapter 31, it is simply a title that lists the elected office holders and references the state statute in which they perform their functions. So we are recommending that we update that as a result of the Constitution and identifying the four elected office holders that will be in place, um, January of 2023. In Chapter 30, we've provided to you sort of a highlight overview of the changes to Chapter 30, which is really the area of the county commission's sort of operational and procedures. Um, many of these items, affect all of these items, were discussed with the commission during the retreat. Uh, we got your feedback, uh, from some of the proposed changes, and what you have before you incorporates the discussion that we had. Um, so I'm going to hit the highlights. Many of these things are simply getting in preparation for going to a seven-member board of the commission. Um, also to take into consideration some of the changes in procedure and operations that the commission has been doing over the last several months, and so we've updated the language in the code to reflect those items. So just briefly, I'll go through each one of these, um, and hit really the highlight and the major changes. So in Article I, Section 30.01, simply the change that we're proposing there designates that the parliamentarian is the one who designates which version of Robert's Rules of Order that the commission follows. Now, there is a section in the code that identifies who the parliamentarian is. That's not changed, and that is the county counselor. In Section 30.16, this is the session of the county commission, so we changed some language to allow some flexibility for the commission going forward. So we typically hold four meetings per month. We have not designated in the code the date and time of those because those, again, can change and be established administratively by the commission. Uh, we've also provide some definitions for a work session. work session and a business session. And we really kind of removed the definition of a combined session because of the increased definition of a work session and business session. There really wasn't a need to do that. In Section Thirty, point one-seven, the commission agenda, we had some great discussion at the retreat. And so this outlines how does a commissioner get a topic on the agenda for other, to be discussed by the entire commission. And so that's outlined in Section Thirty, point one-seven. Thirty, point one-eight, again, is an existing section, talks about the presiding officer, but it also goes on to expand and talk about the pro temp. And if there is an absent by the presiding commissioner and the pro temp, which can occur when we have seven commissioners and still have a quorum, then what do we do if both individuals are gone? And so we'd say that the administrator would appoint the presiding officer of that meeting. In Section Thirty, point one-nine, the commission sessions. So we've changed the order a little bit of these sessions, and we've moved public comment up to the beginning of the meeting in convenience for our citizens that want to come and speak to the commissioners and may not want to stay for the entire meeting. We've also moved some of the other things around and also provided some flexibility in which it states that if there are items that are listed but not being used on that meeting, they're not listed on the agenda. For example, many times we don't have ceremonial matters, and so we would just not list that on the face of the agenda. So trying to do efficiencies and be more transparent to the citizens of what's really going to happen at a, as, at a business meeting or at a work session. Thirty, point twenty is commission rules of debate. In the prior ordinances, commissioners were limited to the time, how long that they could speak and debate. And so that has been removed. Again, live flexibility among the commission as you are discussing items of business. Thirty, point two-one is addressing the commission manner and time. This is more for speakers. And so there was a five-minute time limit. That has been removed, but does allow the ability of the presiding officer to set some parameters. So for example, many times if we have a planning and zoning item, we may have a lot of speakers that indicate they want to speak to the commission. So at that time, starting out, the presiding officer may limit speakers to five minutes or three minutes so that there is an opportunity to hear everyone who wants to speak on a particular topic. Thirty, point two-two talks about decorum. And so interesting, in the past, we had that we prohibited a speaker from coming before the commission and reading a report. We know that many of our speakers that come and speak to the commission have written out what they want to talk about. And so it seemed like that seemed, you know, not very effective and user-friendly for citizens that want to come and speak. So we've removed that prohibited. Thirty, point four-one is assignments and projects given to the county administrator. The current code says a vote of two commissioners. Well, that's a majority of the three commissioners. And so what we simply did is rechange the language to say majority of the commission. So when we have seven, it will take, you know, a majority to direct assignments. And then finally, thirty, point seven-five is a requirement to request a state audit, and that particular section is recommended to be deleted. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. This information was all included in your packet, and certainly county councillor worked with staff and designed and created much of the language as a result of our discussion during your retreat, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. As, as someone who's been kind of here for a bit, I think this update is, is necessary, both from the point of view of making it consistent with the new constitution that we are working under, and also it, it certainly takes care of some of the less rational actions that have been taken in the past. So I, I'm, I think that everything on here, and as you say, has been discussed, is, is moving us in that positive direction. I know there'll be more changes as we go along and we, we make the conversion to our constitutional form of government with seven members of the commission, but I think this is a, I think this takes care of a, a good number of the things that we had that were of concern.
Yeah, you know, I thought we had a great discussion on this at the retreat, and I think these changes accurately and is accurately and wisely reflect those discussions, and I'm happy to support them.
Yeah, no, I have no questions about this. I feel very comfortable with these sort of things that we addressed previously, and I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward.
Commissioner, I may have like two observations.
Please.
Two of the bigger changes that you'll see if this is passed. One is the creation of the immediate action docket. And to make sure you, you know, we talked about that, but the idea here is that there are many things that we do procedurally or ministerially and repetitively that we don't need to go through a, a two-meeting cycle on. And the idea is that some of those can be considered and passed in one, one vote. Of course, any commissioner can pull one of those matters off. And so there's, nothing's being forced down the commission's throat, so to speak, but it does give an opportunity or an avenue to maybe move through some of the ministerial functions a little quicker and give you more time, hopefully, to focus on the things that do take more time. So one example is forever, we have voted separately on the minutes, and they have a separate category on your agenda. That category will disappear if you approve this, and it will, those will just simply, I suspect, start to appear under immediate action. And you can do those in one vote instead of, you know, motion, vote, motion, vote, motion, vote. So a big idea here is to try to make our meetings more efficient and let you have more time to focus on maybe the, the issues that require more of your attention. The second thing I want to point out here is that one of the changes is that the presiding commissioner, or the pro temp, or the presiding officer, whomever it may be, will be empowered to sign off on resolutions and ordinances. That I think, I think is probably essential when we have seven, starting in January. The idea of a pile of resolutions having to go through every single person, every single signature seems a, a bit clunky and unnecessary, and is not in keeping with how most organizations do it. But I want to point that one out in particular because if you pass this, it will happen, you know, when you pass it. So you're, you know, let's say it passes next week, the next meeting schedule, you would see just one signature on the resolutions. And so two of the commissioners wouldn't be signing them. So if for some reason you do not like that, but want to have it implemented in January, we could, you know, we could get, take some direction on that. But, but if you do like it, you know, please know that you'll be seeing that in the next round of meetings.
Thank you. That was a question I was going to ask was when implementation would be. It would be upon passage, I take it.
Correct.
I also like the idea of, of being able to consolidate these items and move them through that are largely procedural. But I'm particularly fond of the idea that it does not mean that any single commissioner gets basically steamrolled or run over. It is within the ability of any single commissioner to bring something up for discussion. And I like the, the fact that it, it, it does have the efficiency, but it is not at the cost of a member who may have minority opinion not being adequately heard. So I very much like that, the balance that, that seems to be struck here.
Yeah, the minority commissioner ability to interact and engage was a really paramount issue for us. We want to make sure that, because that has happened in the past, to the detriment of the commission, in my opinion. So that was a real important issue for us.
Administrator, do you have something you want to add?
I do. There is one other procedural item that is somewhat of a change and certainly want to highlight, and we did talk about it at the retreat, and I see the basket sitting behind you, and that has to do with the warrants. As a commission knows, that has been done as a manual process. You've looked at them individually and committed and signed, and takes all three to sign. And so one of the things in this new process will do is those will now be part of the agenda. And so then the commission will vote to approve those warrants as one and have the backup information. And so, again, the advantage to that is the citizen, because it is part of the agenda packet, will also have access to that information should they so choose to want to read through the warrants. And as you know, those may show up weekly on both a business session and a work session under immediate action for the commission to consider so that we continue our timely process. And so that is a big procedural change, but one that we think helps with efficiency and transparency.
That's exactly what was occurring to me as you were, as you were reciting that, was that it is more efficient, and at the same time, it allows greater transparency because any member of the public would have access to that, whereas at this moment, while they could get access to them, there's a process involved that would be somewhat cumbersome. This would allow greater access under our, our guidelines of transparency. And I'm sure, I mean, we've been through this, but I just want to say this so that it's made clear, and that is there are statutes that regulate our spending of money and the, and the warrants process that we go through. My understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, but what we are talking about doing here is entirely consistent with Missouri statute.
That is correct, yeah.
Commissioner Thompson?
No, I, like I'll say, I feel very comfortable moving forward with this, and these are all necessary changes, I think, to move forward, especially with our expanded commission, so.
No additional comments? Thanks.
Very well. Anyone else wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none. Since we are talking about an ordinance change, something that does have a lot to do with our, the workings of this commission and how we interact with our citizens, twenty-two ordinance Thirty-three for regular session?
I agree.
Very well. That brings us to the end of our, of our regular agenda. Just one point before I entertain a motion. Did we, in our motions, did we neglect to put, to check the boxes on three fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two, or was that included? I wrote it down and I messed it up. So is it, is it acceptable that in, when, when the motion is made to make that division, if it is stipulated that those three items would have the, the box marked approved? Would that be acceptable?
It would be, yeah.
Very good. I'm sorry, we, we, you know, I wrote it down and I kind of spaced right through, so I do apologize for that. Is there a motion related to this evening's regular agenda?
Commissioner, I have moved that we put the following items on next week's consent agenda. Twenty-two, three, five, oh, three, five, one, and three, five, two marked approved. Twenty-two, three, four, six, three, four, zero, three, four, two, three, four, three, and three, four, nine, with each of the remaining items on next week's regular agenda, except for three, four, four.
And of course, with the stipulation that three, five, oh, three, five, one, and three, five, two be marked as approved?
Right.
I think we've, I think we've made the rounds. We've all forgotten that one. Very well. Motion has been made for the division of our regular agenda to be distributed for the consent and regular agenda for next week's meeting discussion. Seeing none. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
Agreed.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
That brings us on to comments on non-agenda items. Are there any comments from the public, from the officeholders, or from an agency on any items not on this evening, this afternoon's agenda? Seeing none. Administrator, do you have comments you'd like to make at this time?
No comments this afternoon, thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Thompson?
No comments today, thank you.
No comments, thank you.
No, other than certainly, certainly we have gone through a, a number of, of issues here, and I think it's going very smoothly. Yes, the gentleman has a comment. Was this on a non-agenda item?
I'm just a listener here, but I wanted to make a comment.
Would you please come up to the microphone and then identify yourself?
I just get to on the lighter side of things, George Paul, like the conservation. I just want to bring your folks' attention to that Raines Road, my little, that big pair of bald ladies out there.
Oh, very good. I, I, I thought they came later in the year. So I wasn't sure that we were, that this was, it was timely, but I, I don't follow the patterns.
No, I just, I just, just wanted to come and listen in today, and I've been singing here the last week, so sent there my truck there where the lift station is off the eighty-four, turning on the reins, head south, and just want to share with you.
Thank you.
Sarah Paul D., who made a big, no, yes, there.
Thank you. No, 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 I, I get that. So, no, I just wanted to say thank you for being here and attending and also certainly participating.
I just come for an education.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that you're here. Thank you very much. Let's see, we've just been through commissioner comments, so that brings us to approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes on this evening, or this afternoon. One for Wednesday, July twenty, twenty, twenty-two, three p.m., and the other for Wednesday, July twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-two, six p.m. Is there a motion related to either one or both of these sets of, sets of minutes?
I make a motion to approve the Wednesday, July twenty, three p.m. meeting minutes, and the Wednesday, July twenty-seven, six p.m. meeting minutes as well, as per today.
Motion's been made for the approval of the minutes of Wednesday, twenty, July twenty, twenty, twenty-two, three p.m., Wednesday, July twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-two, six p.m. Any further discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing none. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Are there any written reports to be submitted to the commission? Very good, there are none. There are no executive sessions listed for this afternoon. That brings us to recess and adjournment.